I got a longer story, but that's.
The relevant one.
Yeah, it's funny how they change. Catch big heavy trout, you know. It's three, four pound. Yeah, and it's only nineteen feet deep. Yeah, she uh. And they're all. Both on. No.
Okay, good. So lady did it.
I mean, eating a couple of them right out of the water. Bad, but I made the mistake of freezing one one time and brought it home. Not like, no, there wasn't any fish there, it was just like a handful of mud. Fishes have a good food.
Well, I got twenty, Sean, you got what, like two hundred?
Ninety.
Nineties, okay. Minutes. That's good. You done it, you got, you filled your off yet?
Yes.
Oh, I boiled it all yesterday.
Yes, true.
That's great.
Boiled, boiled down about. Well, the latter part of the evening is a little blurry.
Well, there was a football game.
There was a football game.
So you guys know we are on the feed. Do you watch?
But, yeah. Uh, we got. I don't know, about eight hours. I hate it. Broke twenty years ago.
That's, that's pretty good.
Stop watching. Yeah. Pro football. It's like, I swear it's. Works really good. It's all, like, it's all planned.
Hour.
Korea. Pokes away. So I finished it right now. I got to finish it. I think it probably will end up two and a half gallons maybe.
That's, that's still pretty good for a season.
On the wall. Oh, it's two and a half percent. And everybody knew. Yep. Out of the trees. Now they all whine about everything.
Do you have? Or do you have reflectometer when you use?
I have a reflectometer.
Are you made Jonathan ready?
Born ready.
And why do we have this?
I don't know.
Just wanted to know if I was responsible for it.
No, you're not responsible for it.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Reed Field Select Board. It is six thirty-two, I'll call the meeting to order. If you would please rise for the pledgeman agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unindistinct, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start with our regular meeting items. We have minutes of January twenty-second. There are also minutes from the joint select board budget committee meeting.
I'll make a motion and approve the minutes as presented.
Which ones?
Both.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second, I don't have my mouse working, sorry. January twenty-second and.
Catherine did give me one edit for page two of the joint meeting.
There's a typo and there's an underline.
Okay.
There's no reason for it to be underlined.
So if, if, if I'll make those corrections or I'll have Angelica make those.
That would be great. January twenty-second and January thirty-first. Okay. Um, so I have a motion in a second and with the revised for the two typos, is there any further discussion? Seeing, oh, and I need to state just a moment, Steve has told me that he's late. He's excused, he's on a bus coming back, he'll be here as soon as possible. So all those in favor? It is unanimous. Warrants thirty-three to thirty-six, this is number twenty-four dash zero nine three. I reviewed those, so I will. Scroll down to where they are. And we also have a new warrant here that I went over today, if everyone could, I didn't sign it. But if you guys want to take a peek at that during the meeting at some point, it can be signed. Warrant thirty-four was payroll and the amount of twenty-four thousand, two hundred, one dollars and eighty-three cents. There were state fees and the warrant number thirty-three was for four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred, fifty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Items of note, largest one is the school payment of thirty-three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty-two cents. We made the monthly payment to Horn Construction for winter road maintenance, forty-six thousand, one sixty-two. We made our payments to the state of Maine. For registrations and. Excise tax of six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. We made another payment to Goral Palmer, the consultants for the sidewalk, that was four thousand, thirty-two dollars. We had a couple repairs to fire equipment that came in at seventeen hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And that pretty much does it, if anyone has any questions.
I was just gonna point out another twenty-three hundred dollars to the truck. Is that something we didn't know? Or is this a new one?
Uh, that's just a, a new one.
That was the power steering hoses and the labor to replace them that we talked about.
Yeah, we mentioned that last time, yeah, so, yeah, no, you're right, that, that was mentioned last time.
Changed three hoses?
The hoses weren't that expensive, they were like three hundred dollars, it was a lot of labor.
Yeah, they're tucked inside the frame essentially, um, so.
And then there was a different repair that they also did, I can't remember what that was.
But, uh, just another bit of money down the drain, I'm, I'm.
That's that question, the twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-seven hundred from North Star Planning for grant writing, what grant was that one?
That is.
That's the.
The planning board for the special payment, they're the consultants that we hired with the grant of ten thousand dollars that came from the state because of the new.
Affordable housing law.
Oh, yes.
LD two thousand and three, so we're actually making pretty good progress on that, but, um.
And that's very helpful.
Yeah, yep, it was necessary.
Okay, thank you for catching. I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous, okay. And we will move on to communications, we'll start with select board communications, if anyone has any general announcements. All right, we'll move on to staff communications, we have fifteen minutes for the town managers' report and the treasurer's report, which Eric told me he has now posted to the website.
Yeah, so.
So if you're on there, you can probably go and fetch those.
You can, uh, one, one thing I will say is that we somehow got two, uh, February twelfth agendas up, so the treasurer's report is on one and the town manager's report is on the other, so.
That's why.
I will, uh, yeah, give you a little hint on where to find that information, so. I'll start with the town manager's report and just go through some activities. Really, um, the administrative side of things has taken a lot of my time recently, primarily between budget work, um, preparing for budget meetings. We've had quite a run, we're gonna continue to have a run, um, and. That, that's been, that's been about half my time is budget, budget prep and meeting prep. The other pieces that I've been working on have included communications to the public, um, we've had to do notices for a number of the current events. The special town meeting, we had to do a lot of work around that, um, public hearings for the special town meeting, public hearings for the sidewalk project, a lot of that activity. And, uh, I've also been working on trying to move forward some of the other projects that we have on, ongoing right now. Um, I did put together a draft document to try to help flesh out the position for the proposed community programming coordinator. Um, and Sean, Dave, thanks for everything you're doing to, to go and talk to people about that. We have gotten some feedback, uh, on that about, um, the hours, but overall, I think it looks like it's a fairly good start. Uh, and we're looking at really a, a bare minimum of a halftime position, um, and then maybe in the future needing more, but I think we're. The way it's looking with the budget, uh, with the, the boards and committees that are involved, I think halftime's the right place to start, but we'll, we'll see where that, where that flows. We prepared for the public hearing on the thirteenth, that's tomorrow, so I just want to remind everybody that we do have a special town meeting on the twenty-seventh at Kent Hill School, Alphonse Athletic Center. To talk about overlay zoning for a couple of, uh, proposed projects and the public hearing for that is tomorrow night here at the town office and. Um, and. So we'll be, um, uh, we'll be talking about that on, uh, tomorrow evening.
So tomorrow is just discussion of the upcoming vote?
Yes.
Public hearing for the. We don't have to be here. You don't have to be at anything else for that, okay?
Yeah. Um, and just a reminder that it is an on-floor town meeting and that was dictated by the, the balancing act between, um, meeting the needs of the applicants and, um, the, the. This functional ability of the town, um, to, to hold a special town meeting. We have and could do a special town meeting with secret ballot vote, but that takes about ninety days lead time. Um, and if we had pursued that option, as you know, uh, we would have been better off just waiting until June, but that wasn't the direction that we headed, so on floor splits the difference. Um, and hopefully, um, it'll be interesting to see what the turnout is for that, I, I, you know, hard, hard talent, but, um, it is an option for us. The, uh, I just wanted to announce that we did get approval from the SEC for our low-power FM license for the, um, to-do broadcast on ninety-four point five. If, uh, and when we get that equipment together and up and running, I did add some to the budget for that. But, um, there's a lot of work that needs to happen in the next couple of years to, um, make sure that we have the community support, uh, for ongoing programming. Uh, and that we have the tools to effectively integrate emergency management, uh, notifications, information into, into that, um, that, uh, that programming, because that is a priority. Uh, it's one of the, the basis for the, um. Uh, the low-power FM license is to use it during emergency situations. Uh, so then, uh, we've had, uh, meetings related to, um, uh, the fairgrounds project, uh, and, uh, those were very, very constructive. Uh, I hope Steve can talk about some of that work that was done, uh, but Jerry and Steve both have been very helpful, um, in moving those forward along with, um, Greg Durgan, Greg Leinbach, and the, the whole group, um, Sean too, I guess. Cause he's, he's, he's been involved in that.
I guess.
But, uh, but no, it's been, it's been a great group, um, and, uh, we, we have moved past that first, uh, transition point and now we're looking at fundraising, so that's very exciting. Uh, and I will say that we haven't had any trouble the last administrative item with email, uh, and so, uh, if anybody is trying to send email from the town account, uh, we may have issues with that. So if you get a rejection notice, um, just know that it's, it's, uh, you might want to try to communicate a different way, but, uh, we are working on that with our IT staff and consolidated, uh, who has our, our, our hosting for the IP address. Uh, roads, traffic and parking, um, we've ordered more, uh, salt to mix with sand, uh, we used a lot of what was in the, uh, the, um, storage shed. And, uh, uh, things have lightened up thankfully, but we still want to make sure we have reserve in the event that we have a, a need. The winter has been softening up a bit, I don't want to jinx us, but, um, you know, things have been good, uh, with. The winter conditions, but the spring conditions, um, give us an indication that we might have to post our roads earlier than usual. Uh, a couple towns around us, you drive from here to Farmington, uh, and, and you see an orange signs all the way. So it's important to, to, to keep that in mind and I'll be working with our maintenance staff and the road committee to make sure we post those, you know, at the appropriate time, uh, and don't overdo it. Uh, maintenance, um, staff continue to work at the library and that has been a big part of their job. They are doing some, uh, winter maintenance as needed, but really they've been focusing on that. And it's coming along very nicely right now because of the work of a lot of library volunteer hours and staff, uh, we have a new opening, uh, planned for, uh, April sixth. Uh, and that's when we'll have the big, the big show and tell and, um, uh, you know, official people and things like that, and I hope the select board can all attend that. Uh, transfer station, the, um, solid waste committee, uh, and the second committee did meet, uh, earlier this month or it was late last month, wasn't it? Any event, it's been, um, a couple of weeks, but, excuse me, uh, but we had a good discussion about the budget, um, we're expecting to see a, a five to seven percent increase, uh, with solid waste costs. Which actually tracks with a lot of other cost increases we've been seeing. Um, our member towns seem to be okay with that, they support, uh, the operation and didn't have any, uh, concerns about the, about the need to continue to, to fund, um, that operation adequately. And, uh, we did have an issue with the compactor that, um, was related to hydraulics, we had to install hydraulic fluid warmer in the tank. Uh, the alternative was to, um, replace the fluid, uh, with a more expensive fluid, which, uh, really we have to do that every year, so it was an ongoing maintenance item, it made more sense to just install. Uh, a thermal couple, uh, controlled heater, uh, element, uh, that we can replace for a couple hundred bucks rather than spending, you know, more than that on the incremental cost of the low viscosity special hydraulic fluid. So, anyway, things are back to normal and, uh, that's my town manager's report.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to the treasurer's report.
All right, uh, so this is for the month of January, um, check reconciliation was completed through, um, I guess it should be January thirty-first. Twenty twenty-four, huh, okay, um, I mistyped that, um, we. Yeah, that was complete, I could remember what year we're in, um, anyway, we had a, um, a CDR come to maturity in February on, on the second. Uh, I'm still looking to find out what the best, uh, option for that is, um, I'm doing some calls around to a few banks to see what our best options are. Uh, good news is that for a six month, uh, we're still above five percent, so we'll be able to get a pretty good return on that when we reinvest that. Uh, the audit is not moving as quickly as I had hoped, uh, but, uh, we do have a final, uh, site visit scheduled for the twenty-first of this month. A short report audit is due the following week, so I said we need to get that done and they've committed to that. Uh, and then, uh, we've scheduled a selection, a select board discussion for March eleventh, so for that board meeting, um, you can expect to have the auditors on hand to talk about the short report. Uh, and to answer any questions you have about the audit process, uh, or how things are going. Comments on the budget, uh, we should be about fifty percent, fifty-eight percent expended, um, and also with revenue coming in about that same level. Summer months often tweak that and, uh, the things that show up, uh, in this report are that we, we do appear to be, um, higher than expected for maintenance expenses. That's because of two things, we're doing a lot of work to the buildings, particularly the library, um, and we always try to draw out of the operating budget first before we hit the reserve accounts. Uh, which is a standard procedure when you do those type of repairs. And we've also had, um, our part-time staff, uh, is much more active in the summer months, um, July, August, September, um, than they are in May and June. And so there's a, an imbalance there as far as staff time for our, our seasonal positions. Uh, another one that's worth noting is that road maintenance is up for the year-to-date, but that's again related to storm damage, uh, earlier in the year. Hopefully we can avoid, uh, a big, heavy spring storm or heavy melt, um, the way things are settling down now, I'm optimistic, but things could change. Another item that's worth noting is that, uh, we are continuing to see, uh, motor vehicle revenue come in lower than expected. Not necessarily lower than, than budgeted, I think we'll be close to our budget, but we're, um, uh, it's a bit disappointing, um, and it's a bit of a concern. Uh, because that is a big revenue line for us, six hundred thousand dollars on average, um, more or less. Uh, it's, uh, this non-tax revenue, so it's an important source. Uh, and then, um, uh, real estate payments are, are more or less on track for the month, but, uh, up for the year-to-date. Uh, and that's, uh, key because, um, uh, we're in between when payments are due, so the fact that we're up to, up to snuff for the year-to-date is really where we want to be. And, uh, everything else looks okay, um, I didn't see anything that really, uh, jumped out at me. Debt service is eighty-nine percent, but that's because we have most of our debt payments in the fall and, uh, that's my. Guess that sums up my, my treasurer's report for the month of January.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? I have one, Eric. Solid waste is listed as nothing. Is that because we've changed over the way we're doing the accounting?
Yeah, no, that's um, that is. So I, that was a, when I had to backfill because I had to pull the data from Trio and I missed it, so.
Okay.
I will, I'll get that information and send it out to you.
We did get financial reports at the solid waste meeting, so I know we've been spending money and paying our bills.
Yeah, we're we're probably around fifty five percent expended. We're just under our our budget target, so that's actually a good thing for us, but. But I'll get that fixed and update the board.
I just have a tiny minor question. So the auditor, did you say that they are almost done auditing the town or just getting?
Almost done. So we thought, we thought they were done. And then they said they needed to come back for additional field work. Because they said they were working with some new trainees. They had some junior auditors with them. So I'm guessing something got missed and rather than have staff go dig through boxes, they're going to come back and and. Do their hands-on work, you know, here, so. In any event, they'll be coming back on the twenty first, so another another busy week.
That's awesome. That means quick. Well, it's. It's actually the expected time period is January, February. It's just rarely been met by any auditing firm we've employed.
Yeah, but again, it's later than I want. I want to have it in January. I really want to have that audit in January. Because it makes the budget process that much easier, because as we said at the capital planning meeting. We're looking two or three years out with numbers that are not firm and the first year is unaudited. And when you have audited numbers, it makes everything that much more certain further down the road, so anyway.
They have had six months because it closed out on June thirtieth, so.
Eric, I did try and do a couple of test emails and they're not working.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah.
Some of mine go through, others don't.
Yeah, it it depends on whether it's a Google domain that you're sending it to. It depends on a few things, but the good news is that stuff coming to us. We're getting everything.
Okay.
We just can't send because we're being blocked by some kind of spam filter and we're trying to get around that, so.
Okay, boards, committees, commissions and departments. Is anyone here in person to speak to that? Is there anyone online who wish to speak to boards, committees, commissions and departments? Are you handling the online or just?
I do, I am online.
Okay, so I will tell you that we did receive minutes. They are attached. To the agenda. We got the budget committee from last April. That's because they didn't meet again until November. And we also got draft minutes from January. We got select board draft minutes from our last meeting. We have two sets from the Fairgrounds Working Group. We have minutes from the Library Board of Trustees from November, the Planning Board from two meetings in January. And the Solid Waste Recycling Committee from October and January, but they only meet quarterly, so they'll always be three months. Away on approved ones. So thank you to all those committees for sending in their minutes. They are available for everyone to read. And just so the public knows, they are all sent directly to the select board members. So we all have the opportunity to click on that email and open them and read them. So we have an idea of what's going on. Excuse me, this is the time for public communication. I'll open it up first to those people present in the room. If there's anyone here who'd like to say anything. Come on up.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Joel Parker, resident of Reed Field on Church Road. And just don't like to really use too much of the town time for any personal requests or personal business, but. I just wanted to potentially clear any rumors or reports or statements that I've been receiving with my wife. I just want to ask the town manager if he's able to state in a public record. Whether myself, Joel Parker or my wife, Virginia Parker, have a pending or have ever in the history of our presidency here at Reed Field. Had a lawsuit against the town. Because that's something that'd be mentioned here.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not. You can't answer it or absolutely not?
No, absolutely not. Yeah, no, no lawsuit. No, no, no.
Okay, no. I appreciate that because it seems like my wife and I have received reports that we have. Either sue the town in the past or have a current lawsuit against the town and which we do not, so I just. I apologize again for using public time for just a personal.
Well, I apologize for having that need to do that.
No, no, it's just something we heard and we just want to clear the air that we we do not have a current lawsuit against the town. We do not have any intention of filing any lawsuits against the town of Reed Field. Taxpaying citizens of the town and I don't think it'd be very intelligent to sue your own town and. Raise your own taxes, I guess, against yourself, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, unless we're doing something really wrong, then it would maybe make sense.
No, I just want to ask if that was even a possibility and I thank you, Eric, for.
Yeah, no, no problem at all, yeah. Thank you, Joel. Sorry to come up for that.
If there's anyone online who has a question, comment or concern?
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing in the chat and no hands raised. Okay, so we will move on to the next section, which is appointments, reappointments and reservations. We have five minutes. We have two things to consider. Item twenty four dash oh nine four, the appointment of Sonia Clark as warden for the March fifth presidential primary. And we'll just roll it in together with twenty four oh nine five, the appointment of slated ballot and election clerks. It's in your packet and I would take a motion unless there are questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the application. For. Sonia Clark.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Sonia Clark as the warden for the March fifth twenty four presidential primary. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it is unanimous. There is a second appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint the slate of election clerks as listed in the packet.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint the slate of election ballot clerks. Is there any discussion? I'll just say thank you to people for volunteering to do that. It's an important part of the process. And really needed and it really supports our town staff who work hard to make the elections correct. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Eric, do you have papers for us?
Do.
Okay, they can come around.
We will sign those.
I just wanted noted that we are now forty five minutes in, so we are.
See, the problem is though, when you do that, you jinx us.
So, so we are just running exactly on schedule.
Let's just keep rolling.
Okay, old business, number twenty four dash oh four three here and consider an update on the Fairgrounds project. Steve, we're so glad to have you with us. Can you tell us anything about it?
I can tell you a little bit about it. We met last week with the most of committee. And basically just debriefed the public hearing, how that went, talked about fundraising plans and. How we pulled that off, talked with, it's some good information from Greg Leinbach about the possibility of getting. The National Guard involved to do some work as their their engineering battalion. And I've experienced that. They did our ski trail at school back. In like ninety four and they did a great job, saved us a ton of money. You know, they went out and they just like did a lot for a couple of weekends of training. And so Greg's looking into that as well as contractors for possibly, you know, in-kind donations, so trying to do some things like that to keep the. Dollar cost down. We're looking and we talked about fundraising plans and. Bottom line is that most of the folks in the committee feel like when. Once the the articles, the warrant articles is hopefully approved, that most of them are not. Totally interested in doing the the fundraising. They're they're a little burnt and during burnt out, that's all. They've been cracking. But a few people will move on and do that. I think Greg's interested in doing that, Greg Leinbach and Hannah Flannery for sure. But we we're going to meet at least one more time. We want to meet in early March so we can look at the warrant article. But after Eric has it ready and before it's approved to go in, so we want to just kind of check that over, but. Yeah, that's that's where we are. We have some numbers, some additional numbers that I didn't bring because I just got off the school bus, so. I have some additional numbers that I was planning on bringing for just estimates, but we're really looking for more estimates anyway from the engineers. There's a couple of other areas that they didn't include that we want to make sure they do include. You know, but it's still looking about the same as it was last month in terms of total overall dollars without any. In-kind work of, you know, close to a million in that ballpark.
Well, the in-kind, I take it would come off of that. That's the estimate.
That's the estimating, that's the all encompassing.
In-in kind would count as part of the town's contribution.
Right.
To decrease that.
Yep.
So I thought found it very useful to see the listing in our packet that gave us some of the areas.
Yeah.
Find that interesting as well. Carol.
So the the prices here, I'm sure they're just kind of estimates. Some of them seem like. Really steep. For instance, it talks about export to waste of of ball field like eighty two thousand. So are these. Some things we're going to encourage local people that. To get involved and do some of this. I think I mentioned at the meeting, there's like local. Landscape guy in Hollowell. There's we have local garden people all over town with quite expertise. Some of these seem real steep and I thought. The ballpark improvement, ball field improvement, six hundred thousand dollars was like. So I know these are initial numbers. They just seem really. Are these professionals? Like you said, they're coming from engineers, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, and so like, but you know, that doesn't include any in-kind work, Carol, and and the export to waste is there. As a possibility, it's hard to know the balance of you're going to be moving a bunch of fill around. And I think when they did the last ball field, if I remember right, that they had to haul some material off-site. You know, because they had some material that needed to be moved. There wasn't any place to put it onsite. But they don't really know at this point yet what the balance is between, you know, we're going to be moving a bunch of dirt, right? But we don't know how much of it. That we move onsite will be able to be put somewhere else onsite as part of the fill, you know, that's. And so there's, there's still early enough in the engineering process that they don't have a firm figure on that. So that's why it's there as an estimate for sure, you know, so none of the, you know, a lot of those numbers are not to be cast in concrete at this minute, right?
Well, they could go either way, but these are, these are professionals. This is their.
That's what they do.
Job.
Yep.
And these are the best cost projections based on. Other projects that have been done, current costs.
And I will say that we did ask to get the feedback from a couple of local contractors on on some of these numbers and. The the response I got was from one anyway was that they looked, they looked about right.
Really?
Yeah, things cost a lot more. I mean, we've, we've seen the increases. Things just aren't going down quite the way we would hope, but again, it all depends. A lot of this depends on petroleum. And so if there's a a big war in the Middle East, then this all goes right out the window. If there's not, then then maybe things are okay. And again, as was pointed out, this, these numbers are are just the cost if we were to do everything. Through paid work, so that's important as well.
There was a comment in the chat from Sue that it was only stumps that were hauled off on the last.
Oh, the last one.
On the last one.
Thank you, Sue.
And so I, my understanding of how this gets funded is the. You're going to tell me the name of the group again, Eric?
Land and Water Conservation.
Land and Water Conservation, thank you. I'll try to get past my mental block on that. But they'll take this whole project and they will cover half of it.
We hope.
We hope, well, that's the plan.
Grant that's not submitted yet or is that?
No, that's, we've been working with them for a couple of years.
Okay.
And so that's what they do is they have funds available to match half of what projects cost.
Gotcha.
And then we have to find the other half. And there are lots of different avenues to do that, and so of course. Like when we built most of the trails in town, we have a cost and when people volunteer their time. And their tractors with their time or their tree cutting equipment and and all the various things that all counts as money. Even though they're not charging us and they're not being paid in cash, it's called paid in kind, and so that comes off of the dollars. So. Okay, we'll move on. I'm sorry. Are there any other comments and questions?
Yes. So I, I just want. Kind of, but I'll wait. So we have all been talking about this project for a long time and talked about starting fundraising, so. I've spoken to every member of the board and Eric and we're, we've all kind of put in our first donation to the sum of. Start off with five thousand dollars from the board and Eric to start fundraising efforts. Dave and I have also been in touch about ways to help with a bottle drive at Jansels. I don't want to say that wrong in Winthrop. We just haven't put our brains really together to finalize that, but the weather's not the best for that, but they. They will do a long-term bottle drive if you have a either a trailer or some structure. We've got in our minds.
I I suggested an alternative.
And what they will do is they will, when they have free time over the course of the month, they'll count and keep a tally and then they'll send us a monthly check. For that too, so anybody that, you know, we tell that could go, that would be a great fundraiser too that we have. Started the works on that, so.
Where's that located?
In Winthrop, where Paris Farmers is on the big mill there.
Yep.
Cool. I've probably most people take, a lot of people take their bottles there. There's not a lot of places left anymore.
No, there are not.
Right.
The only one around now.
Yeah, let's do clinker.
We do clink.
Yeah. That's it. You're good to go, Carol.
Anybody else? Yes, I'm Catherine.
Catherine.
Okay. Okay, twenty four dash oh four four here, consider an update on the Reed Field on the Church Road Sidewalk Project, Eric?
Sure, so the last couple of months, we've been just working with the engineers to get documentation submitted to main D O T. So they can review the current draft proposal, which is about fifty percent complete. The big pieces are there that they haven't done the fine tune of of figuring out grades of driveways or or things like that, other than to say. We know that it's in this range. They haven't done the the specific design for all the curbing. There's a lot of work left to do on the project. They've done enough to know what it's going to look like and generally where it's going to go, so. That process is where we have been really since the last select board meeting. And we did get comments returned from from main D O T. They wanted to see some language changes. They wanted some justification for why we thought that the speed tables were were necessary. And you know, the some questions about on-street parking and where the pavement cuts were going to be and things like that, but. Those have been answered by the engineer. I expect we'll get more at the public hearing. But really, this update is about that public hearing. Now that we have those things in place, D O T has had a chance to review the plans. We're having the formal public hearing. We've sent out notices. We've put out publications. We've done everything we can to help raise awareness about that issue. And it'll be the twentieth of February at six thirty P M here at the town office. And we'll have Zoom. Folks can participate. That way they can be here in person. Also, we always have the option. Folks can just call or deliver mail, email, whatever. And another option that's a really good one is to use the town website for. We have a public comment form that's that's quite helpful that archives any kind of public comment that's coming in that direction, so. Right now, the agenda for the hearing on the twentieth, again, February twentieth. Is to essentially have a a welcome introduction with the engineers. Presentation of the current draft plan by the engineers, a brief one. And then, you know, forty minutes to seventy minutes, the bulk of this is to hear from the public again about. About, you know, their thoughts on the project and and D O T is actually. Excited about this. The engineers are excited about this. They like the plans. They think they're viable. It just comes down to the town of Reed Field and they said that we're we're further along in the process than most towns. A lot of towns don't have a public hearing until they get to this fifty percent point. We've already gotten past two plus some site visits where we've had interaction and a lot of communication, so. I think we're in a good spot and I'm looking forward to that public hearing on the twentieth.
Carol.
Just a quick question. Thank you if I did get a. Just a quick question, thank you, I did get a flyer in my P O box, so it sounds like they are car and wide. Um, so thanks for making those widely available. Is this um gonna be one of the blasts, like the alerts we get? From the town, are we using it?
Yeah, so, so when we get a little bit closer, we will send the email blast, so um, with this type of communication, we have to phase it, we have to. Schedule it and um, uh, this, um, this one definitely will have an email and a, uh, another um component coming out. Uh, when we get closer.
I don't know if we wanna use the. Other opportunity at the um fire station sign about this. This one seems to be widely disseminated, so maybe not. Quite as necessary, but this is some of these meetings that are a townwide of interest, um, that may be another place to think about.
I think that's a great idea to put, especially any public hearing. It's short to put on their, you know, sidewalk, public meeting. Church Road Tuesday, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll check into getting that done. I think that can be, we can take care of that.
And they don't happen all of a sudden, so someone can plan to do it. Anything else? So I have something that's related. Um, I don't know how many of us are planning on being at this meeting, but I am happy to be at it. Cause I was going to be anyway, but we did receive a notification, well, Eric and I did, cause we're on the email list from the Kennebec Valley. Emergency management planner that on that same night in Fayette, there is going to be the G four oh two class. Which is the one select board members need to take for the emergency preparedness course. So it's at the Fayette Central School and it's at seven. So if you wanted to come to the church or public hearing, you could hear the update from the people and then leave and get to the school and do the class. It's seven o'clock.
Is that something we have to sign up for ahead of time, do you just show up with?
Um, I think, let me see what he says. Yes, you have to reach out, so if you let Eric know, he can um schedule us. Would that probably be the best way, Eric?
I think it would.
Just forward the emails to everyone.
I think that we, yeah, we can get internal emails uh back and forth, so yeah, I can send that out.
Um, because we had discussed previously about having Eric asking to have a class for people in the area. And then we got this blast from Kennebec EMA that they're doing it, so. They can't get much closer than the Fayette Central School.
Is there, I mean, the Church Road hearing's at six thirty and that's at seven, is there a, another date or another opportunity for the training?
There, there will be, yeah, there will be other opportunities, um, and probably one here. Um, he had just thrown that out as um to. If anybody was interested in taking care of it, um, but I, I did let him know that it conflicted and said, hey, can we look at something else? He's like, sure.
Oh, okay, so it's not, alright.
It's not essential, but uh.
But it is convenient. Um, March twenty seventh, it's a Wednesday at six, they're doing one in Oakland. So there are options out there for folks. Twenty seventh, it's a Wednesday, sorry. Okay, moving on to, was everyone done? Okay, moving on to twenty four oh forty seven, is, there's any action item reporting updates? I have none, I have let mine go.
I think Sean filled it in with the. Multi-tasks there earlier.
Steve, anything else?
I think um, we got a couple of things that are, they're going well. I don't know if you saw the article in the Kennebec Journal last week about the community cafe. And that's going great guns right now. John Perry for the community is working on it and um. Dan Holman and Rick Saroyes at the high school, and they've done a great job. They have kids presenting almost every time and acting as hosts and they're gonna. Like, they expanded from a senior cafe to the community cafe and they're getting sometimes twenty, twenty-five people a week. Showing up there and people are really, really enjoying it. Um, it's really a truly good community thing, so the school's doing a really nice job with that. And um, as well, we've been, uh, they've been getting a good number, seven, eight people a day uh for walking the halls during the week. But now we um are, it's either happened or. We're this close to having it happen where a couple of the folks um who are walking during the week are gonna be able to get a scan card from the central office. To be able to open it up for Sa- on Saturdays and Sundays for folks who wanna walk, not all day, I think, well, they're working on exactly when, but. So that, that'll be an option also um for people during the, on the weekends, so that's cool.
That's very cool.
So. Give this, give the people at school, Steve Vosik at Adult and Community Education, um, has been awesome also. And a lot of people at school are kind of stepping up to do some, you know, really try to help out with that, so it's good.
Few things, um, I did make a lot of calls to businesses, I don't have a lot of replies back, meaning, are they still in business or are they just? Stop responding, which is fine, um, but I did find some that did not wanna be on the town website anymore, like the business is closed. I did ask that, there wasn't a business category for lodging for town, um, and I was trying to list ours. Um, so I did ask and very promptly, they did add um lodging and rentals to be added as a category, so we're in there now. I also invited another um Airbnb um owner that I met, say, hey, you wanna post? Um, please do. Um, so we're working through just kind of cleaning the list or just make people aware that it's out there. Um. And then if I do talk to people, let them know about the packets going to new residents, um, to be included, if they have a brochure or business card or whatever. Um, but just to make sure that the information that is in there is accurate with phone numbers and all that. Um, one other thing came up and I had talked about doing a. Small business showcase and I did submit one for. To be included in February. Um, and then I heard, whoa, it's like a whole page on a business in town. And there was some concern, like people pay for an ad to be in the messenger. Um, my intention was, and they, um, I've sent the, um, what are the? The bylaws or whatever of the messenger, it was basically to talk about what's going on in town. That's like essential what this is, and this is. Pretty much what I was doing at the post office is taking businesses that people may not be aware of. Um, and I start off by saying, I'm trying to make people aware of some of these hidden gems and at the bottom it says, if you wish to be included in the future. Please contact me. This one was on Barter Farms, who's been around for twenty years. I did not even know of them, nor met them. Um, except for like a year ago and uh, hairdresser I go to right down the road, talked to them and I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. And I've lived in this town a very long time. Um, so this is just a, a thing of what they do, um, what they sell. They do whole sites of beef, they do cuts of all kinds and pork and, and um beef, very good quality. So it's just kinda, hey, this is what's going on in town. Um. People that work hard, um, and just people, make people aware of businesses and I, I guess my thought is, um. I can't imagine somebody would have an opposition to something like this, it's just like, hey, this is going on in town, people don't know about it, so we're just letting you know. And then, I guess if anybody did say something, I'd say, hey, bring it on, you're, you'll be in the next month. So I don't, I was doing it innocently, just trying to let people know of some small businesses that are in town and um. Can't imagine people would take offense, but I guess we can talk about it.
So I, I did talk to Eric about this and um, we'll discuss it tomorrow, but it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. So we'll have, um.
When is the next meeting?
Our, our next week, two weeks, twenty seventh.
Okay, and still in time to do March, because that was my intention, I mean.
Um, so I, we're gonna have, uh, most likely have one of the town staff who works on the messenger come and. Uh, give us some information and then the board can, now that you've given them the article on, people can look at that and then. We'll have it write up in the um. Agenda and we'll figure out what the best way to handle that is. We have to be very cognizant of the fact that we can't market for private business, we're a government entity. And so we can, we can generate awareness. And um.
That's totally what this is.
Yes, we have to be very careful that we don't have any sort of favoritism. So we, we need to have guidelines so that we make sure that we're doing things the appropriate way so that everybody benefits equally. So I, that's what the discussion should focus around.
Well, my intention was, um, just get the ball started with somebody. And my hope is, like, when we get close to spring, it's like, hey, does anybody put docks in, does anybody do yard work for seniors? And like some of these maybe teenagers or something, does your teenager wanna be a list of call up, you know, it's, get some of these. People in town that need help and some people willing to do it, or maybe people that have the businesses to do those jobs and nobody's aware of them. That's, that's it, to some seasonal postings with multiple people, we just wanted to get something out there to get the ball started. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to item twenty four oh eight four, consider a commercial hauler permit, there's just one for the transfer station, I think it's for Simmons Trucking.
Yep, and uh, this is the last one that we um, we, we'll be approving, everybody else has submitted theirs, uh, I hope you approve it anyway, I'll recommend that. Um, and uh, payment's been received and we have their recycling plan and other required documentation.
Would entertain a motion if there are no questions.
Move to approve the um, commercial haulers permit for Simmons Trucking.
I'll second that.
Now your question.
Didn't we already do a permit for Jim?
Uh, nope.
We did Archie's last time and the time before we did.
Wait, is this, let me just double check this, cause it's.
You might be right.
We did two the first time, yeah.
No, he might, I think he, he might be right about this.
Maybe I have the wrong one in here, um. Yeah, I'll look at that.
Yeah, it might have been in the first round, the first.
So that would have been the January.
You know what, it, it was Jim Diamond, not Jim Simmons, so.
The last, the other one.
No, I think that Jim, Jim uh Diamond is the one that should be in here by.
So there's still a gym to do.
There's still a gym.
So, yeah, so we do, can we, we can't, we can't see the application there, because.
No, I mean, if, if you wanna take it on faith that uh, that, that it does exist and he did pay, which.
I'll accept the motion for the right gym.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, but I'm going to the agenda from the last meeting so that we can just. Put the correct name in if you guys wanna do it this way. But you're sure we did do Simmons already?
Yeah, I'm sure. Jim Diamond was the one I had to call three times, cause he was late, so.
Okay, so then, let's. I'd rather have a motion for the correct name.
Okay.
Jim Diamond.
So um, we have two different motions on the table right now, so I'm gonna.
Okay, so I'll, I'll withdraw my motion for the wrong name.
Okay.
Okay.
And.
And then Sean, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the Jim Diamond.
And I'll second the motion for Jim Diamond.
I have a motion as second for Jim Diamond as a commercial hauler. Taking it on faith from Eric that we have all the required paperwork, the fee and everything is all squared away. And now I'm back on tonight's agenda. Nope, I'm on January eighth, oh, darn. Okay, uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor. It is unanimous. Okay, let's see, I do have the packet, yay, alright. Moving on to item twenty four oh eight nine, consider replacement of the five fifty maintenance truck. In your packet, you'll find a new. Uh, document that compares the three fifty and the five fifty with all sorts of reasoning. Um, Eric, I, we don't have Matt with us tonight, but he gave us in writing what his choice is. Uh, do you wanna present anything or just have us discuss it?
Um, you could go for discussing, Matt's not here because he's in his last uh CDL uh training uh course tonight, so he had his test today, he hasn't. But there's a class they're doing tonight, um, and then he'll be done with uh, with his CDL, so that's why he's not here, so that's, that's good news. But no, essentially, I, I, we, I talked with Matt, uh, we went back to the drawing board, I asked him to do more work and more assessment. Um, and he uh, he did that and looked at um, the comparison. Uh, the cost difference is two to three percent outfitted between the two trucks. Um, but uh, our own review and discussions with others indicates that um, that little bit of savings probably isn't worth it, considering the operation that we run. Um, and uh, that's really the, the, the bottom line is that the, the recommendation from Matt. Uh, was that um, the board um, uh, look at replacing the, the current F five fifty. With a, another uh, five fifty model. And uh, yeah, that's it.
So I'm interested in hearing from the three people who had concerns and wanted to hear about the three fifty, so. Based on what you've read and so on, how are you feeling?
Well, mostly, that's why I wanted the comparison to just put it to bed right there for two thousand dollars, it's not worth. Yeah, it's not worth the, the trouble. Um, the only question I would have was, do we have, are these all the prices we have? Cause I know we should have had some prices from Bailey's as well, I have to talk to Brenda, and I know she sent some prices in. Where did we get, um, are, are these the lowest quotes that you got or?
These were the lowest quotes we got, yeah.
But we don't know where they came from?
Uh, I couldn't tell you, Matt, uh, Matt could, uh, but uh, these were the lowest, um, the lowest quotes we received. But now that these are out here public, if you've got someone that wants to send us a better number, I'm happy to talk.
Well, I, like I said, I happen to be talking to Brenda and, and mentioned it to her, uh, Bailey Brothers. And she said that Matt had asked her for a price, and I know she sent them in, so I was just curious if we had gotten that pricing, yeah.
So I think it's important for the record, I'm gonna read the conclusion and then we can have a motion and vote, but. Uh, this was written by our town maintenance man. There are many towns and contractors that utilize the Ford F three fifty or other later duty trucks with a nine-foot plow, but in many instances, these trucks are not fitted with sanders. Or simply overloaded if they are. These towns and contractors also have larger trucks at their disposal that fill their other operational needs. Operating one truck fitted with a plow and sander in the winter and moving materials in the summer, we do not have that luxury. In short, we need the medium duty capacity in order to meet our current operating needs, not reduce our capacity or service levels. And to provide value and efficiency in doing so. When considering the minimal price difference between the trucks relative to the significant loss of operating capacity with a three fifty model, we continue to recommend the F five fifty. So that's the basis, I think, of what our comments are coming from.
Just a question, we're looking at a purchase, not a lease.
It's, it's called a lease purchase.
Yeah, so that's the same as, it's not the same as what I would get, right, Eric?
No, so the way we do a lease purchase is we work with a, a financial institution, a bank, um, uh, and um. They would give us a five year, well, it's, it's similar, I guess, um, they, they would give us likely a five-year term uh to pay for the, for the vehicle. They would then pay the dealership straight out for the, so it'd be like going to your, your bank to get a vehicle loan. Um, but we get rates that are usually one, one and a half percent less than what's available on the, on the open market, because we're a municipality and we're. Guaranteed to not default. Um, and so uh, we get lower, lower rates, so um, what my. Uh, what I'm looking, if the board does decide to move forward, this would be a, a motion to move forward with um, whichever purchase you think is most appropriate. Um, to uh, secure a, a lease uh for the vehicle and to um. Uh, move forward with um, uh, having it outfitted and purchasing the appropriate equipment. Uh, and uh, to move forward with selling the existing truck when it makes sense. Uh, because this, this vehicle won't be ready, um, i- if we do get one, um, three fifty, three fifties are a lot more available, a five fifty, I think we're still looking. Three months out at least, so um, we would have to mesh all that together. Um, so if you can give us authority to make all that happen, um, it, it's a pretty standard thing for us to do to, to get these leases, so.
Eric, I don't think you answered the question about leases, though. It's not like me going to get a lease on a vehicle that has ten thousand miles and at the end of it, I still owe. Thirty thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, no, no, yeah, that, you're absolutely right, so this is a lease purchase, uh, so we pay um, our um. Annual fees, we are, you know, the, the, the principal, we pay the interest and then we own it outright at the end of it.
That, that was my question, and then budget, budget wise, instead of it all being on one annual budget, it's. Spread out over five budgets?
It's spread out of five, and, and I think that um, usually, um, I try to do three to five on vehicles, I think this one's probably five. Um, what you want to do is match a little bit, as much as you can, um, the life of the vehicle with the, the. Um what you want to do is match a little bit, as much as you can, um the life of the vehicle with the the term of the loan. Um but I also don't want to have things drag out because the longer it goes, the more you pay in interest, so.
Alan says we don't have enough debt.
Well, anyway. I I I find that um I I like.
Never had anybody tell me that.
I like the five year term because it 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 it's comfortable from a budget perspective, but it also avoids us paying unnecessary interest, so that's what I'd like to do.
And at the conclusion, we own it.
We own it, yeah, and we've done this, well, with 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 everything, yeah, with compactors, with trucks, with the the J C B that we have at the transfer station, the backhoe there, uh the Bobcat, all those things. That's how we soften that impact. Uh we do use the reserves as well to some extent, so.
I appreciate knowing that. It's just when you hear the word lease, it's like, why are we doing that, you know?
It's totally different meaning, it's weird.
Yeah.
Most leases, you lease it, and then at the end of it, there's a buyout that's ridiculous.
Like a balloon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the other question I would have with that is, uh are we essentially borrowing or leasing the full amount for the truck? And then what do we do with the proceeds for selling the truck? Are we going to apply that to that lease or take it out of a different account or how how will that work?
So um the way the way it would work is we would um we'd do the lease, um they would um set up our payment schedule. Uh hopefully, before we made our first payment, we would have um uh the sale of the truck in there. Um and then we would use that um amount to pay, excuse me, either um if it's kind of semantics because it's all the same account, but what I like to do basically is leave it in the account and pull out like eight or ten grand a year to to soften that impact, so all we have to come up with uh out of taxes would be the um the incremental difference. So we basically, we we buy the truck, it gets paid for by the bank, we start making our payments. Um and then we have the money that we get from selling the truck coming in. Um and we can use that either to pay off all of one year or to pay incrementally um over the course of the five year term.
So do we have any estimates of what the used one, the one we're trying to get rid of is?
Yeah, so we're looking at um Matt's thinking higher, I'm thinking a little bit lower, but we were looking at around fifty thousand.
Wow.
I don't want to um over uh estimate.
We try not to use the language of want to get rid of. I think we repurpose it for somebody else.
We're done using it.
Yes, so um so we were looking at the chassis um uh being around seventy five thousand um with um the uh with the upfitting. Uh we were looking at around seventeen thousand for the plow and sander. We did expect um that we were going to be spending this year six thousand on um on the sander anyway. Uh we also were looking at getting uh a an extended warranty on this one. Um so we were looking at um a a net of around um uh ninety one to ninety seven thousand. Um and then that would drop um uh by, uh let's see. And then I was looking at around fifty to fifty five thousand for the resale. Um that would include the the truck, the uh existing sander and the plow that's existing, so.
So you're saying the one we're done using is could be fifty thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
So why wouldn't we do that and then pay down the loan we're asking for that we're budgeting over five years?
Well, because we have to have a truck in the interim for three months that we're um going to be waiting for the new truck to be. So we won't have the money in in hand for three, for three months.
So I think the question that, or the issue is we're going to take out the loan for the ninety thousand dollars approximately. We will, because we need to pay for it to have it arrive. When we sell it, what are we going to do with the sale money? And do, I think what we need to decide is, do we want to just let Eric work that out the best way he sees with all of the budgeting that he does? Or do we want to prescribe to him, when you sell the truck, the proceeds go to pay down the lease? So um we either trust him to do it the way that he sees fits best operationally or we direct that we want it to be paid directly off on the the lease. Does that make sense? So there are three components and possibly four to this motion. So one is to authorize the lea- or we can make separate ones. We need to authorize the purchase and the lease. And we need to authorize um the upfitting and we need to authorize selling the other truck. And then if you want to direct the proceeds from that truck, that needs to be stated as well. So whichever one of you wants to have fun with that.
Can I just make another question too? Can can we check all the quotes again, Eric? Because I would rather.
Oh, absolutely.
Somewhere closer than going to a Rundle forum.
No, I didn't want to interrupt. I was going to tell Dave that I will find out what that Bailey's quote was and send it, um share it with the board, so you guys can see that.
Yeah.
When we got the last one, a Rundle was less by something like six or seven thousand dollars. It was sizable.
Uh one other question, I'm assuming we must have, Brenda did ask me, is we, do we have a fleet number? Because there's fleet pricing and then there's otherwise.
Uh I'm I'm sure we do. Uh I'm sure we do. Um but I can I can ask Matt about that as well.
She's she said it's not a big deal for you to get one, but it is a different price schedule. If you priced it on fleet.
Will that, will all dealers do that? Okay, give you a different price schedule?
I think it's a it's a town thing that you have to, you have to apply for it for a fleet number.
Who gives it? Who gives you a fleet number?
I don't know where you get it from.
Okay.
We need to do it.
Well, that might make the difference between a Rundle and.
I, yeah, I'm not sure how much of a difference it makes, but it is a different price schedule.
Yeah. So in our motion, we're not authorizing a specific purchase. We're authorizing the town manager to make the purchase and we're trusting that he's going to take in all the information you've given.
And and I will also look at the reserve and see, because I think I I had played around with the idea of uh pulling the plow and sander out of reserve, because again, we'd already budgeted for um those, and honestly, those are type of things you wouldn't include with the lease, so the lease would actually just be for the the chassis and the upfitting. And so that 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 should reduce that amount anyway. Um and then we can take the sander and the plow out of reserve, which is, I think, the better approach or the best approach, so.
So I'll I'll make a motion to approve the town manager to proceed with the purchase of F five fifty.
We can do it one at a time, then.
I'm gonna do one at a time.
Okay, good idea, because I I couldn't have done all four of them, yeah. I I'll second that motion then.
With the lease purchase, yeah.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to have the town manager purchase the F five fifty with a lease purchase agreement. Any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, that is unanimous. Next.
I make a motion to approve the town manager to sell our current F five fifty diesel.
Second, I didn't know, I didn't.
I have a motion as second to authorize the town manager to sell the current F five fifty diesel. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous?
I'll make a mo.
Oh, go ahead. No, I'll happily give this up.
I I'll make a motion to apply the sale of the existing truck to pay down the lease on the new F fifty, five fifty. It just seems, you know, if you're selling a house, it just seems to to pay down what we're.
Let's make the motion and get a second first.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pay down our lease using the truck we're selling. Proceeds from the truck we're selling.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, that's it.
Okay, now discussion here.
I think I kind of did already, but it just seems like.
Oh, yeah, no, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Family budget is you're buying something and selling something. You take the proceeds from a used car to buy the new car and you reduce your payments over time. And your interest.
I I'll make sure I talk about that with the lease, because I think that part of it is, we're getting the money upfront, so we don't know exactly how much we're going to be getting from the sale. So I'll just make sure there's no prepayment penalty.
That's right.
And and that's that's, I don't think that'll be an issue. Um we're we're a good um a good um borrower, so we shouldn't have any issues saying that we'd like to be able to pay this down when we sell the truck. I don't think they'll have a problem with that, so.
Good. I really like this approach this time, um because this was an unexpected expense and it wasn't in the capital plan to be purchasing this right away. And um I like the idea of paying it down sooner rather than just making a couple of payments, because then the the next four payments or the remaining four payments will be lower. So it will be easier to put into the capital plan that way. Thank, so.
Are we done with that one?
We have to vote on it.
All right.
Okay, so no, okay. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Yeah, Sean.
So do we have to do a separate vote for the sander if it's already in the budget for, because we were going to replace the one we got now anyway? Do we have to do another vote? Another?
Well, no, we approved the the F five fifty as presented here included everything, the ninety one thousand. So Eric will figure out the particulars.
That was all outfitted.
Perfect, all right.
That was the dump body and all the extra lights and stuff and the sander and the plow and I am trusting Eric will will take it out of his accounting as he has told us.
Uh just a, not a little late for the question, but just so people, we're we're selling that as a package when we sell it, right? The whole deal.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes the most sense, but do you have any thoughts on it? I mean, would you?
I I think you're better off to do that.
As a package.
Yeah, by the time you
Yeah.
Sell this piece and that piece and. One kit, it's better all set right up, yeah. Business startup, there you go.
So that's the that's the intent, so we'll we'll do that, yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
There's only three motions. Did we do it?
We did it.
Okay.
Eric, do you have everything?
I had counted four before.
I do. If if anything changes, I'll let you know, but I think it's looking pretty good and um
And Angel.
I'll double check with Matt and make sure that he um gets one more round out and uh we get the best price. So this is the final, this is the final, your final chance to drop in your pencil, so.
And the fleet number.
And the, yeah, the fleet number, yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Moving on to new business, we have thirty minutes set aside for item number twenty four oh nine six, seven and eight. Oh nine six is the second draft of the budget. Um it's for twenty minutes. I'm gonna make a suggestion, Eric. I'll take it or leave it, but I have found in past years when we've looked at budgets, if we go to the very end and look at the things that you changed since we last discussed it, it gives me a better starting point for what has happened. And then as you go through specific things, it seems to make more sense. I don't know if anyone is.
I like that a lot, actually. Yeah, I like that a lot.
Um and so that's on, that's way down at the end. It's on page forty seven in your packet, the revision history.
You know. Um so I think it's worth just noting all of these changes, because I can't remember when we talked about it last, um but I know we had the joint the joint workshop on the thirty first, um so that was an interceding event um that did kind of change some of the direction on this. Uh but I have made a number of changes. First was um uh we updated the transfer station reserve. Um and so that shows that uh it was actually thirteen thousand. I had um I had included, I pro-rated a proration, so I'd done forty two percent of forty two percent. Um and that was, that was obviously wrong, so um our actual contribution to the capital side of this is thirteen thousand. Um and that's to kid, take care of the uh the compactors and all that business. Um we did remove ten thousand dollars for the transfer station revenue um uh due to available balances. What that means is I was planning on using funds from the reserve to offset tax impact. Uh but when I got a better handle on the reserve balances, it wasn't, we didn't have enough there. We had a couple of grand. Um and that wasn't going to be enough to um to 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 justify that ten thousand, so that was removed. Um I did update the debt service schedule, um uh and there was no no change to the budget numbers there. Because we had those right in the right spot. That debt service, uh it's important to point out. Um again, we talked about it at the um at the joint workshop, uh but we have a trend where our debt is going down uh incrementally by certain percentage every year. It's looking like it's a good downward trend. There there is a feeling among some that we might need more debt, but um I I really think that we're 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 doing okay. Um I I'm I'd rather put money in the bank and spend it um as we go. Particularly particularly for things like roads, uh where we have very large uh annual expenditures, uh but we're not paying any interest on it. Uh and that's and that's nice. Let's see, so the uh transfers expenses down, so this is where we get into some of these um new accounts that we're dealing with. Um and uh I put in less in road capital um and less in building reserve. Um just because uh we had um, um and that was what was presented at the meeting on the thirty first. Because we seem to have a sufficient amount in um in those reserve accounts. Uh I added eight thousand dollars to the truck lease, um and that would be, again, the incremental cost uh on an annual basis if we were to spread out that um the estimated sale proceeds from the truck over that five year term. I I'm going to have to revisit that based on the discussion tonight. And I'll have to make sure we talk about, um I I talked to the um the lending institutions about what the what effect that would have and what the schedule would look like with a a lump sum kind of payoff uh for the for the truck. Adjusted first park expenses and revenues, uh so uh we do have a net positive. Uh and that means that we have a budget of sixteen thousand seven uh seven, two hundred and fifty for expenses and eighteen thousand dollars for revenues. So what that means is we're going to be in the in the positive once again by uh one thousand dollars roughly, uh and.
It's still a lot over the whole term.
And seven hundred and fifty.
It's better than the other direction, so.
Yeah.
So I made that adjustment. Uh let's see, non-tax items. Um so um we did talk about at that, um it's, so these are February changes that I made later on, um as I kind of worked on this on a weekly basis. That after our discussion, I did make a non-tax transfer, so um what we're looking to do is be, uh we'll be spending money on the um roads and on the sidewalk. Uh money for the sidewalk would be coming out of um uh the um the roads, but the roads would be paid for by money going in out of ARPA funds. So because the federal government has particular rules about how money can be spent, uh we can't just say, well, we're using ARPA to pay for the sidewalk, uh because they would say then that that's a federal federal dollars paying for a fed, matching a federal grant, and they don't like that, so we have to do a transfer to make that happen. I don't like it. I think it's silly, but it's what we have to do. Um so that's a non-tax, because all we're doing is shuffling money between reserve accounts. Um and they'll show up as a warrant article in the town meeting, uh but it will have zero tax impact. Uh the uh reserve uh for sidewalk, actually, I did, I was able to pull that down by thirty thousand. We hit a, or excuse me, not the reserve, the tax impact. We had budgeted money for that. Uh but we actually have uh about fifty thousand dollars or will have about fifty thousand dollars in reserve at the end of this fiscal year. Um and that, in addition to that one ninety that we're using um from from ARPA, from roads, um we'll add the two forty, which is uh uh our twenty percent share of the entire project. So that is, um it's a big number, but it's also a number that um because we've been saving, because we've been looking at how to use funds um from other reserves and and apply ARPA funds smartly, uh we won't have any additional tax impact on that, so I alluded to that at the meeting. Um I I made sure it was going to fit. Um and then I put that into the budget so that we can show um it, you know, where where it is and where it isn't. And then I added ten thousand dollars to the low power FM equipment line. Um and that's basically going to be going into reserve uh to help pay for the broadcasting and uh programming equipment that we will have to have for that emergency communication tool. Uh so it's not inexpensive, uh but that would cover things like the antenna, um the power's uh equipment in down here. What we're going to be doing is tying into a lot of the um same type of um equipment that we're using for the our other broadcasts, our TV broadcast, but we'll also have radio equipment in here uh in in the back room. Uh and we'll have to have uh things like what Bill has currently that helps promote um, you know, twenty four seven programming on the cable station. We'll have twenty four seven programming um to some extent running uh on on the emergency uh station. Uh and during an emergency, we'd be broadcasting uh important things uh about road closures and all of that. Uh but we also can have the option of talking about what's happening with public events uh and things like that when we're not broadcasting for emergency purposes, so. That's where things stand with the budget. What I'm seeing right now with all of that being done is effectively a uh about a four percent increase over last year. That's better than where I thought we were starting. That's just the town of Reed Street, Reed Field side. Again, we can't control what happens with the school or county. And again, that's a little bit higher than what we're seeing for inflation. Inflation's looking to be three, three and a half percent this year. Uh but we're at four, in part because we have uh five percent across the board negotiated wage increase for staff and we're a staff-heavy uh enterprise. The other piece is that when we look backwards, what we've been doing is slowly increasing since um two thousand The other piece is that when we look backwards, what we've been doing is slowly increasing since um two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty. Uh, and so we've been softening some of those impacts, so last year was less impactful. Uh, you know, than, than, than it could have been because we're absorbing a little bit of that impact in this fiscal year coming. So um we've been, I think, planning ahead uh on dealing with the drop we saw uh during uh COVID and then the increase afterwards. So uh that, that really summarizes uh where I see things right now, uh we have one more budget committee meeting for department-level uh discussions. Uh, this coming Thursday, it's not a Wednesday, because Wednesday is Valentine's Day and I'm not making that mistake again. Uh, uh, got in trouble for that, uh but uh Thursday will be the budget committee meeting and uh.
Um, well, that was really fast.
That's my summary.
So Eric, on page forty-six, the one just in front of the summary of changes.
Yes.
The budget we're talking about now is twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
And so I'm in the first chart, so it's showing that in the current year right now. On a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar house property assessed value. Um, there was a ninety dollar increase in the proposed, proposed increase for this coming budget is twenty-eight dollars. Did that ninety, was that just municipal or was that municipal and school?
I think that's just municipal, um but I gotta check that number because that doesn't look quite right, um I've been, um I have to transfer all the information over. So I'll check that number because that looks, looks high.
Yeah, because the six oh nine to the six ninety-nine, I don't, I didn't think we went up that much last year.
I didn't think so either, but I'll, I'll check that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, where are you on that page forty-six?
In the first table. So it says tax year twenty twenty-five, municipal tax rate two seven five. So the, the increase for just the municipal, not the county or the school, is twenty-eight dollars. But then this current year that we are already paying our taxes on, it says it was ninety.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
Which it may have been, but.
I'll have to check that, yeah, and so, I mean, I think that, that there's something up there uh with the numbers, but I will, um I'll check into it, if you look at the page before that. Um, it is our, our graph that shows the, the change over time. And I'm looking, it's looking, looking to me like um last year was closer to, to four or five percent also. Um, so I've got to, I've got to find out what's going on with that one number. Um, it might have to do with the fact that we do change um from year to year that overall valuation. And that's an important point I'll make, is that um right now, this four percent is showing based on not factoring our home values. So we factored those every year by ten percent over the past three years, or it was fifteen percent last year. Um, so I think um it might have something to do with that, but.
Okay.
What I'll say is that Dave uh Ladoo, our assessor, does believe that uh we will likely have to factor again this coming year. And so that will change some of those numbers by a little bit.
Okay.
Um, and and you can expect to see the, the valuations go up and the mill rate go down uh to accompany that.
Well, that only seems to make sense because people's selling prices for houses that they're selling is. Pretty far different from what our tax assessed values are. A, a lot different, so.
Yeah.
I, I think it's okay for us to catch up on that side and doing it gradually is better.
Yeah, there are some towns that have had to do forty percent increases in a single year and we're, we're, um I'm grateful we're not in that boat because that makes people. I mean, it really doesn't affect what they're paying, paying taxes because their mill rate goes down dramatically, but their value goes way up and um it's a paper. Um, uh shock, it's like, uh, like, you know, it, it's not a real thing because it doesn't affect what you pay. But, but it feels real, it's like, it's like when you're on a stage and you step off two by four and you go down, down a notch by an inch and a half. Uh, and you see a thing twice, but uh it's not a real thing, so, um, all right.
Have we heard any assess from the school district yet?
We haven't, um but I do know that they are um concerned uh as we are about, about a hefty increase. Um, what I've heard is that they're um negotiating a union contract right now, um with wages that have had been steady for the past couple of years. So they're gonna get a bump almost, I, I believe they're gonna get a bump uh pretty heavy out of that because they're labor-intensive even more than we are. Uh, so I think that's gonna be the case, talking to the county commissioner, uh or a couple of county commissioners and their um their county manager. Uh, they're looking to see another sizable increase, uh they actually had five percent last year, but Reedfield, we lucked out, we only. Uh, got a one percent increase because other towns increased more than us because of the state valuation. But this year, the state took a more hands-off approach and just basically, as far as I can tell. Uh, took Reedfield, Fayette, Wayne and and half the other towns in the county and increased them by the same rate regardless. Um, which I think is irresponsible on their part, but whatever the, the case may be, uh we're not gonna see the same benefit. If, if it goes up by five percent this year, uh we're gonna see a five percent increase, and I think that we'll see at least that from the county, so.
I know I mentioned this at the budget meeting we had with the budget committee on. But the new. Paid Leave Act that passed in the state has to be paid for. And it's paid for half by the employee and half by the employer. And so that's a one percent increase to the school district. And that goes into effect in January, so it'll be a half a percent, they said, for this coming year. But if you, you know, they're eighty-five percent, eighty or eighty-five percent of their expenses in people, in a, in any school district. And so if you take a one percent increase. That's sizable and that's mandated by the state, so.
Well, last year it was all maintenance, remember, there was a fifty percent increase on the maintenance line for the management of the buildings.
Yeah.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
So the state has made passed a fa- a family paid leave act that any, all employees anywhere in the state. Will get paid family leave under certain circumstances for family members, and I think it was twelve weeks.
That's standard, right?
And, yeah, but it.
There's a tax.
But it's, it's a tax, and so if you're, depending on what size employer you are, it depends on who pays for it. Um, but people can take leave to care for uh a stepfather who is unable to care for themselves. And they're guaranteed to get their job back and they're guaranteed to be paid. And that money is coming to pay them is coming out of a fund, well, the fund is being paid half through employee deduction. And half through employer deduction. And so that really hits you hard in a school district because we're gonna have to pay it for this, the town, and we're gonna have to pay it for all the school. Um, and it's a state mandate, so.
The town is a maybe, um I, I've talked to municipal, um and I, I believe that we, we, we haven't been subject to F M L A in the past. Um, it depends on how they define their fuzzy, that, because there's some fuzzy stuff in that, in that legislation.
There is.
Uh, and um. Because there are questions about whether or not certain classes of, of volunteer or stipend folks apply. Uh, and in the past, we've been not held to the F M L A standards, uh which has been helpful, but. It, we, we, I did ask Teresa to give me an estimate of what it would cost, and it's not, uh, it's not consequential because we would be. Again, looking at only a quarter of a percent because we would be looking at our half, which would be at the most half of a percent, but only for half of the year. Uh, but that's, that's for us if, if it comes to fruition, uh again, um we need to get clarification on it, but we're, we're, we're thinking about it uh also for us.
And then the added problem for the school district is if you have an employee. Who takes twelve weeks of paid leave and that employee interacts with. Children, there has to be a substitute hired and substitute pay in Marana Cook is like one seventy-five a day.
Maybe two hundred.
Two hundred.
I don't think it's that much.
Not that much.
I think, I think it's one twenty-five, it's the college kids who are home doing it.
Yeah, well, okay, it depends on what your level is sort of.
By the time you pay all the taxes, it's one seventy-five.
Right, um, so if you take twelve weeks, you know, that's sixty days, right? Twelve times five days, um, that's per employee who uses it per year. And this isn't a you take it one time and then you can't take it again thing, so this. This could have a huge impact to school budgets and they'll have to budget ahead of time for what they think might happen. Um, so we're gonna see any, it, the schools are saddled with a problem. So we're gonna have to be pretty understanding of that, that, that's, that was a mandate. Um, any other questions on what was in here?
Yes, tiny minor point, um and a thanks, um. Animal control went up a little bit, and I know in the past we've had a lot of turnover there. Um, these folks are on call and get calls at like two AM that to go look for my lost dog and they use their own personal vehicles. Going on some pretty rough roads to find animals, so that's really small, but. I think that's important to retain.
Sure, yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, I mean, it's hard work, um and uh we um. Uh, we, we did apply the five percent across the board to, to every position, including the stipends, um so that was an intentional thing. Um, and, and you know, we, we do try to look at that uh on an hourly basis, um and, and you know, when you look at it hourly, um. It, it, it's healthy, uh but considering that, again, the time of day, um I think it's, we're, we're looking at a pretty fair rate right now between thirty and fifty an hour, depending on. Um, uh, the nature of the call and how long you're out, so.
Okay, and then um we spoke very briefly about, and maybe you just address it, stipends and the fire department, I was surprised how low. Um, the pay was for these guys that are on call, but then show up every Tuesday for like two hours of training. So this little bump, so did, and it seems like everybody else got a bit of an increase, was the chief and the stipends, did they go up recently?
Yeah, so the same five percent across the, every, every stipend position in town got that five percent.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Eric, for keeping us up to date, we appreciate that, we'll look for more. Um, twenty-four dash oh nine seven is discuss a revised system for beach and transfer station stickers. I take it that little flyer is what's going out to the public that you put in our packet?
That's been in the messenger and um, yeah, and that's what we've been using for communications broadcast, um. What we, what we do, uh and what we will be doing is as we rule out this program, this is something we talked about, I think, last year. Um, and what it does is it makes things a lot easier for residents, um because the beach, uh in the past, we've had, they've had to, you know, give a lot of information. Um, it was helpful, I think necessary more so when we had people paying individually to use the beach. Now that it's a, a public resource, um we don't necessarily need or want to have to track. Um, you know, the age and names of all the children or anything like that. Uh, and there is a mu- a, a certain um amount of, of faith and trust here, uh basically saying that. Um, if you have a vehicle full of, full of people going to the beach, um we're not gonna ask questions, if you have a sticker, you're good to go. Um, but we do expect that folks continue to have um their cousin from New Jersey who's up visiting, uh pay that, that, that fee because they're not a taxpayer. Um, uh, or their family uh isn't, uh, their immediate family, so um. Folks will be able to use their stickers for the beach and the transfer station. Um, and all we will need to do to verify residency is if someone has a sticker, we will just confirm that that's right and then they'll get a new sticker. If they don't have a sticker, um we'll ask for a, a vehicle registration or some other kind of proof of residency. Because the whole point here is so that people from out of town aren't using our transfer station, dump their crash. Uh, and they're not um coming to the beach without paying their fair share of taxes to support that. Um, and so uh those, those two things, uh we will add a lot of efficiency. Um, and, and folks will just be able to use that one sticker for both places, so.
And. When you say a non-resident taxpayer, that's a person who has like a second home in Reedfield.
Yes.
They're not a resident, but they are a taxpayer, so they're entitled to use the beach.
Absolutely, yep.
So I'm just thinking of college students, which one comes home in the summer and wants to go to the beach, but they don't tend to go to the transfer station. So how do we, and they have their own vehicles, so.
Yeah, um, so if the vehicle's registered in, in, in Reedfield, they get a sticker.
Okay, so that the town hall.
Easy peasy, yeah, we're trying to make it a lot easier.
Thank you. Or at the transfer station or at the beach, so if they just go to the beach when it's open on a Saturday when they're there.
Okay.
They don't have to come to the town office, is the idea.
That's right, yeah, uh, in the past, we had to run everything to the town office, we kept license plate numbers, and I said, this is, we, we can do better than this. And uh, so, so we're gonna, we're gonna try it out, I mean, people that want to find a way to not pay the little bit of fee, they'll find a way, right? I mean, and we shouldn't be making everybody else suffer or do go through um acrobatics to get a, a pass, um just because one person in a hundred is gonna um abuse that, so. Um, I think that we're taking the right direction and, and I hope people appreciate it, we'll see what happens.
Do you know what our daily beach fee is?
Uh, it depends on the group size, um, uh, but.
You're just a person.
Just for an individual, I think it's like five to eight dollars, it's not a lot.
Well, interesting just of note, um Monmouth was in the paper yesterday, they're thinking of putting in passes for their beach and. The fee for non-residents, they're looking at forty dollars a day, a hundred dollars a week.
What?
Yep.
You must have some good salmon.
So, um. Well, I think, I think the idea is that they're trying to discourage people who aren't residents from using their beach because they're getting overcrowded and then the people in town can't use the beach. Because they don't have any system.
It sounds like it'd be effective discouragement.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
I'd love that problem, that'd be great.
Wouldn't it be a great problem?
Wouldn't they have the facilities to manage it currently, so.
Right, okay, last item of business, twenty-four oh nine eight, consider pending real estate foreclosures.
So, um, this is just a, a kind of an FYI, I did uh put in your mailboxes the list of, of pending real estate foreclosures.
That means we have to go to it.
I'm not the only one?
No.
I, I, I did that today.
Okay.
The reason I do that is because.
Oh, that's why I checked it yesterday.
Yeah, no.
Nice try, Dave.
Um, uh, so what, what we try to do is try to keep a little bit of um, um, uh. Modesty's not the right word, but we don't, yeah, we don't wanna make a big deal out of this, people sometimes have trouble. Uh, but uh we're down to just a, a very short list, right now, I can say we've got two, four, six, uh eight. Uh, folks that, that have about two weeks um to uh finish paying taxes from twenty twenty-one. Um, uh, in order to avoid the foreclosure process, we've seen a steady stream of folks coming in and paying, we've been working this less down from, uh, you know. Quite, quite a few, uh, we, we had a static point around uh twenty-five or so and now we're down to eight. Um, we, we've been making phone calls, they've all received certified mail, um, we give, uh, offer, uh, advice, sometimes well-received, sometimes not. On how folks can, you know, use a credit card, talk to relatives, um, you know, look at, look at other options. Um, but what we don't wanna see is folks feel like they have to do a short sale and sell it to someone who's looking to flip their house for paying their back taxes. Um, and, and that type of stuff happens, that's one reason why we don't wanna make a big deal out of this because people will be taken advantage of, I think, and. Uh, we've seen it happen and it's, it's a, a real shame, so. Uh, but we also have a new state law that we are working under, so no matter what happens, uh if these properties are foreclosed on. Uh, they, they will be sold, uh and the town will be made whole, our administrative costs and our back taxes will be covered. And then any uh additional funds would be returned to the property owner, just like we did with the, the one um that we had that was in limbo for a couple of years. Uh, but we've got things sorted out, we have the state law that's fairly clear, um and we have a process that we can rely on, so. Um, we will do everything we can to make sure this doesn't happen, uh, uh, and um. At, at some point, though, we have to make sure that the fo- the folks in town that are paying the taxes don't have to pay for the ones that aren't. Uh, and so this is an unfortunate outcome, but uh if it happens, which we haven't had for, for many, many years, it's been probably five years now. Um, uh, we're hoping it doesn't happen again, uh but uh if it does, uh we will move through that process. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to mention is that um we do do a review, um Chip, uh the code officer and I go through the list. Uh, we look and make sure that nothing is a um, an environmental hazard, so if someone had a, a twenty-acre junkyard. Um, then the town could legally say this is gonna be way more than we can handle, it's gonna be a net deficit to taxpayers, it's not worth it. Uh, but outside of that, that rare circumstance, um we actually are obligated to foreclose again, so we can make sure that the taxpayers that are paying don't have to pay for those that aren't. Um, so we did do that review, uh we didn't see any, any hazards, uh any, any uh obvious defects. Uh, and as we get closer, um we'll make sure uh that we do site visits to every single one of those properties, usually. The week before foreclosure is just to knock on the door and say, hey, we wanna make sure that you have every opportunity uh to, to take care of this and um. Uh, and most of the time it happens, so, uh, a- any questions on that process or where we are, why we have to do that? All right, thanks.
Okay, the last items in the packet um is the FM. Low-power broadcast. low-power broadcast station construction permit that Eric talked about already. And also letting the public know that nomination papers are available starting next Wednesday. Uh, there are two select board seats, two RSU thirty-eight school board seats and three local school board seats that are available. So, yes, Carol?
I think we, um, missed page fifty-one, the public hearing. Do we have to sign off on that?
We did sign off on that already. Sorry.
That, that was an FYI item.
Okay, if I can just ask, um, can that one be on the fire station sign too, like after the church road one is down? And I, I don't mind helping with putting that up.
Oh, sure, for, for the town meeting vote. Yeah, so absolutely, yeah.
Okay. They should probably both go up now.
He wants help with that. I'm happy to, to help.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that, um, either gets done or.
Yeah, they drive by often. They're working across the street right now. Yes. Any other items? Seeing none, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
My motion is second to adjourn. Now I can say it twenty minutes early. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Spectacular.
It was nice to.